Call this meeting of the June ninth, a regular June meeting to order. And at this time, I'll entertain approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schuford to approve the agenda. We have a second by Mr. Suddles. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous vote. And at this time, we will now have an invocation. Invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silent reflection. And at this time, I'm asking Mr. Chuck Abernathy to return the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Lord, grant us faith to make real the word of God. We rejoice in your presence. You are our strength, our refuge, and our Savior. We pray for the recent graduating high school students. Let them meet every success. And we pray for all of our students and staff that are working towards the additional graduations that will occur over the years. Grant us your peace and prosper the work of our hands. In your holy name, amen.
Okay, at this time, normally, we have the famous McDowell High School NJROTC do our pledge to the flag. But tonight, we're going to have retired Lieutenant Commander Chad Marsh to lead us in our pledge. So.
You would, Mr. Marsh, appreciate it.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marsh. I appreciate that. Okay, Dr. Gritt, your remarks, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, folks, for being out there tonight. It's a crowded house after a graduation. It's good to see everybody's already, we're still into it, which is great, great news. I was just making a joke earlier with a student who graduated on Friday night. And, you know, I said, "The very first thing you could do is be back to a board meeting on Monday morning." Ryland, we appreciate you being here, of course, Claire as well. We've got several students who returned that are going to be receiving awards tonight. We're very proud of you. And I think that just, folks, that just speaks volumes to the level of kids that we've got, that the day after school's out, graduation's over, here they are to receive some recognition. That just says a lot. I wanted to share an article recently that I put out in the paper, but I felt like it was one that I wanted to read to folks here. So this was really remembering the 24, 25 school year. So I'm just going to read this to you. The 2025, 20, 2024, 25 school year began much like any school year, with students eager to return to school and teachers preparing their classrooms. As a district, we started the year with a convocation where all of our staff had the opportunity to hear from Missy Teesterman. She was the National Teacher of the Year. Miss Teesterman shared with her experience of teaching in rural Tennessee just across the mountains from us here in Marion. We ended up having a lot in common, as Miss Teesterman had even taught some of our students who were associated with a local manufacturing company that also had a plant in her hometown. Little did we know at the time that tropical storms in the Atlantic would be brewing and heading our way. Miss Teesterman shared stories of adversity and triumph with us that she experienced with her students over the years. She spoke of the hardships her school faced and how her town changed over the years. Miss Teesterman was an excellent speaker, and there was no doubt why she was named the National Speaker, or Teacher of the Year. You could feel the passion and the pride as she spoke of her students, even tearing up at the fact that as the National Teacher of the Year, she would not be in her classroom. Instead, she would be traveling the country. The days following Hurricane Helene on September 26th, I came to understand that McDowell County was extremely blessed to have teachers like Missy Teesterman. Our teachers ensured that every one of their students was accounted for following the hurricane. Teachers and staff who worked tirelessly distributing food and items of comfort to families in need. Teachers who came into our school despite the struggles due to the storm's impact. They came to work, took care of our students, and then went home to clean up from the storm. Teachers at Pleasant Gardens opened their doors, making space for our students and staff from Old Fort, as they spent the next week moving and organizing for students. After two weeks, we reopened the doors to all students, except those at Old Fort. The following week, we were able to open PG for Old Fort students, and all of our students returned to school. Our staff helped reunite our schools, enabling the community to return to work and ensuring our students have a safe place to loom. If there's a National School District of the Year, I would cast my vote for McDowell County Schools for the 24, 25 school year. I could not be prouder to work with a team that prioritizes our students' needs over their own. Later in November, I had the opportunity to meet Miss Teesterman once again. It was at the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award Ceremony in Washington, DC. She recognized me from the crowd and immediately asked about our schools, letting me know that she had been praying for us. I told her about the work our staff did to open our doors. She teared up, and she said she was not surprised to hear how well our staff did. She could tell with her, from her time in Marion this August, or last August, that we had a hardworking and resilient community and staff. After reflecting on this school year, I must say, I'm honored to work in a place that will always put our children first. And because of this, our students have excelled to great heights this year. As we prepare, and as we prepared, I wrote this just the other day, as we prepare to graduate the class of 2025 this Friday, which we just did, I have no doubt that our students are well-prepared to take the next steps. We hope that many of them will return to McDowell County to help us bring up the next generation. On behalf of my office, the McDowell County Board of Education, I would like to extend our gratitude to all of our staff, emergency services personnel, local law enforcement, fire and rescue, and community leaders for their support in helping us to return to school and for being with us every step of the way during the 24, 25 school year. We could not have done it without you. Mr. Frank, I also want to take this opportunity to let, let folks out there know that we did have an additional award that came in just last week. We received notice that Mr. Jacob Davis, senior at McDowell High School, who just graduated, was recognized as the, an all-state baseball player. It was one of those, we did not have an opportunity to get Mr. Davis on the agenda. We might need to do that at some point. But even, even as the kids were walking across the stage, we were still learning about some of their accolades. It just, it just speaks volumes about the resilience of this bunch of kids and the staff that we've got working with them. I'm incredibly proud and honored today. Thank you. All right. I think I'll step up to the podium for this nation.
Yes, sir.
All right. Tonight is also a special night for a retiree. He didn't, we don't, you hadn't heard us say that very often, have you, Mr. Trinks?
Well, we've got something special for you tonight. And first of all, we want to just thank you for coming back tonight. It means a whole lot that you would give up your time on the lake. I know you're probably busy out there, and what better would you be, have to do at six o'clock on a Monday, a beautiful Monday afternoon than come to a board meeting after you're retired? But I promise you, we won't let you down on this one. I've got, I've got a prestigious award that I want to present to you tonight, Mr. Trinks. And I'm going to ask you, first, I'm going to turn your face a little bit red, but I'm going to ask you if you will, come on up here to the, to the center. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. I'm going to put you on the spot. All right. Folks, it's moments like these that don't come around every, very often, where we pause to reflect on the life of service, dedication, and unwavering commitment to others. It is a true honor to be standing here today, part of a celebration that recognizes not only the years of work, but the legacy built through the integrity and quiet impact. On behalf of the governor of North Carolina, I have the incredible honor of presenting one of the most prestigious recognitions our state can bestow, the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. This award is more than just a certificate or a ceremonial title. It's North Carolina's way of saying with deep gratitude, thank you, thank you for showing up, for leading with integrity, for making the lives better quietly, consistently, and without ever asking for recognition. Today, we honor Mr. Garvin Trinks, a man whose name is synonymous with the dedication and service to McDowell County. Mr. Trinks began his journey with McDowell County School at just 18 years old. Over the next 45 years, through skill, hard work, and unwavering commitment to the students and staff, he rose through the ranks from maintenance worker to director of maintenance. He has made it his life's mission to ensure that every school in this county is safe, functional, and welcoming. His work has endured the respect and commendation of every superintendent he has served under. But beyond the certifications, achievement, and recognition, Mr. Trinks' greatest legacy is his heart, his tireless work ethic, his fiscal responsibility, and most of all, his devotion to the children of McDowell County. He has worked countless hours beyond the call of duty, not for praise or for spotlight, but because he believes in the power of safe, well-maintained school to transform a student's day and maybe even their future. For these reasons and so many more, it is my deep honor to present Mr. Garvin Trinks with the Order of the Long Leaf Pine on behalf of a grateful community and a proud state. Thank you.
Now, Garvin, the one thing I want to show you, and we talked about to make a toast. In order to make this toast, I'm not a member of the Long Leaf Pine, so I can't do it. Charlie May, she can. She, she can, she can make a toast. You can make a toast. I think Ms. Marsh can make a toast. There may be a few others, but I just wanted to point out that there's one of the few things that you can do, especially the same teaching, as you can see, that we actually appreciate you, and I can give that to the state, and the Long Leaf Pine. I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Great work, you guys. And I'll, 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 I appreciate my time, working here.
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gritt, you should have reminded him, Mr. English can also make that toast.
Yep, that's right. Just the other day, Mr. English can make that toast with you. Next up, we have our student recognitions, and I'll invite to the podium, Mr. Chad Marsh. And folks, as Mr. Marsh makes his way to the podium, if you all will, just roll right up so we don't have to announce you. Just follow the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir, members of the board. Dr. Gritt, it's always a pleasure. Tonight, we want to ask two incredible young people to please join us here. Ms. Claire MacArthur and Mr. Ryland Parkins, if you will, please come front and center with the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, recently, the North Carolina High School Athletics Association announced the recipients of the 2024, 2025 Heart of a Champion Award. The North Carolina High School Athletics Association recognizes this award for student athletes across our state who have demonstrated exceptional sportsmanship, leadership, and community service while participating in high school athletics. Each recipient represents the very best of North Carolina's high school sports culture and exemplifies the values of integrity, perseverance, and dedication on and off the field. Ms. Claire MacArthur, a basketball and volleyball player. Claire has overcome a hearing impairment to become a leader on and off the court. She volunteers at youth camps and shares her story with children diagnosed with hearing loss. Mr. Ryland Parkins, a two-time conference Player of the Year in basketball. Ryland leads school mentorship programs and has overcome major health challenges to remain an active and impactful student athlete. Mr. Superintendent, these represent the very best of McDowell High School student athletes. We're very, very proud.
Good evening. I have the pleasure to spotlight Valentina Trillo. She is in a remarkable achievement, has made history as the first McDowell County student to receive the North Carolina Seal of Bilitracy. This prestigious accolade is awarded to students who demonstrate exceptional proficiency in two or more languages by graduation. Graduating on May 16th from McDowell Early College, she not only earned her high school diploma, but also her Associate's in Arts from McDowell Technical Community College. She is set to continue her educational journey at Eugene Lang College of Liberal Arts in New York with a focus on psychology and art therapy, and plans to pursue a master's in counseling. McDowell County Schools proudly celebrates Valentina's achievements and the impact she has made in her community. Congratulations.
So it's my honor to get to recognize some of our art students from McDowell High School. So each spring, members of the U.S. House of Representatives sponsor the Congressional Art Competition. It's a nationwide high school visual arts contest designed to recognize and encourage artistic talent throughout the country and within each congressional district. This competition is open to all high school students in grades nine through 12 within each district. And so McDowell High School, we were very proud to send four of our students this year to compete in this. And Ms. Christina Cannon, if you'll step up here. She entered two pieces of artwork and was awarded first place for her stunning still life drawing. Her work is going to be displayed in the United States Capitol for one year alongside other district winners from across the country, and she and her mother are going to travel to Washington, DC to get to participate in this special honor.
I've got a question. After one year, is it for sale after that? No. It never hurts to ask.
Name your price, Christina, name your price.
That is her other piece of artwork that she entered in this. Also, Barbara Nell Leggett, she received honorable mention and the Facebook Favorite Award. Also, while we were there, Congressman Edwards was so impressed with her work that he asked to have that to display in his office. So she cannot be with us tonight, they're on a family trip. So there's her artwork. Bailey Burnett was also awarded with honorable mention, and that's Bailey with her artwork. I think we've got it, there's the close-up of it. And then Emily Bean artwork was recognized for its excellence in the competition, and there's Ms. Emily. With her artwork. Yes, and, and I would like to also recognize the outstanding guidance of Ms. Christie Shaw and Ms. Sarah Weatherman Marsh. They're my dedicated art teachers at the high school. Their passion for teaching and commitment to developing the talents of our students continue to shine, and these students here can attest how great Ms. Shaw, Ms. Marsh are. So we appreciate them. Thank you.
Mr. Frank, if I may, real quick.
Please. Go ahead.
My older brother is, is here. And Eric, could you introduce your family and Val, and your relationship to Valentina?
Sure. So Valentina is my niece, her mother is Torania, my wife, Sula, and her aunt, Muni Sol. They're all sisters.
Thank you.
And Sebastian, her brother.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, Dr. Gritt, members of the board, and esteemed guests. We have all had those incredible people in our lives who bring joy, laughter, support, encouragement, and an incredible amount of energy. If the Energizer Bunny was a person, it would undoubtedly be Zachary Eden. Zachary has been an absolutely instrumental member of our EC department. He's always on the go, whether he's facilitating monthly PLCs for our school behavioral support assistance, visiting schools, working in classrooms, and directly supporting students. His dedication shines through in everything he does, from earning his trainer certification for CPI, which stands for Crisis Prevention Intervention, to adding on an additional certification for supporting students with autism. He even provided after-school behavioral support for a student who couldn't attend during regular school hours, showing his commitment. One of Zachary's many accomplishments includes establishing student coping skill groups. He meets with these students weekly, helping them understand appropriate ways to communicate frustration, advocate for their needs, and express themselves effectively. Beyond all his hard work and focus on student success, Zachary also keeps us entertained. He's got a song for every conversation, a witty joke to lighten the mood, and a constant reminder that our jobs are centered on people, individuals with unique needs, talents, and abilities. And now, for a final celebration, we're thrilled to announce that Zachary has been accepted into the BCBA program. This means he'll, he'll be returning to school to become a Certified Board Behavioral Analysis, pursuing a master's degree in applied behavior analysis or related field. Zachary, you, you are beyond deserving of this recognition. It is truly an honor to watch you be celebrated for the amazing things you do for McDowell County Schools. So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Zachary Eden is our Certified Employee of the Month. Next up, we're going to ask Ms. Becky Burleson to come on up here. It is an honor and a privilege to recognize an outstanding individual whose dedication and behind-the-scenes efforts keeps one of the most essential operations in our school system running smoothly. Our Classified Employee of the Month is Ms. Becky Burleson, a vital member of our Transportation Department, where she has served for over eight years. Mrs. Burleson's responsibilities are numerous, and each one plays a critical role in ensuring the safety and efficiency of our transportation system. She assists with submitting all required paperwork to NCDPI, helping us maintain compliance and accountability at the state level. She also coordinates drug testing for our bus drivers, ensuring that we uphold the highest state, safety standards for our students and staff. In addition, she aids to managing the processes for the DOT medical cards, which is a big deal, supporting the health certifications needed for our drivers to stay on the road. Mrs. Burleson organizes the scheduling for bus driver training and renewals, a task that becomes increasingly complex when you're supporting a fleet of over 60 school buses that collectively travel more than 3,700 miles every single day. Her meticulous attention to detail, dedication to safety, and ability to manage complex logistics makes her an indispensable part of our team. Mrs. Burleson, thank you for your care, precision, and heart that you bring to your work each day. Your impact on student safety and operational excellence is deeply appreciated by us all. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Becky Burleson as our Classified Employee of the Month.
Don't leave yet, Ms. Burleson. Don't leave yet. I've got to pay honor to this woman. I'm telling you, Ms. Daddle alluded to the health cards you got to have to drive a bus. And I am a bus driver. And I've had some medical issues that I have to renew my card every year. So it takes a collaboration between the cardiologist and your physical doctor that gives you the physical. And I'm telling you, this woman has been over backwards the past three weeks so I could get my health card to her before I had to go to some truck driver training school to renew everything. And so, let me tell you, when she, she didn't touch the surface of what she committed this woman for. I'm just one of many, but she takes the same attitude and the same patience and the same everything with them that, that she did with me. And I'm going to tell you something, don't you ever think I don't appreciate you, because I couldn't get that doctor on either side to budge. But, but, but she kept telling me, "Oh, honey, it's okay, it's okay, we'll get it, we'll get it." And I thought, "Yeah, yeah, right." But anyway, thank you so much.
Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce a special guest tonight. Actually, you always see him every time you come, and that's Mr. Joy Hill. As your term, Mr. Hill, comes to an end as Teacher of the Year, we want to thank you for your dedication and service throughout this remarkable time. Your presentations and contributions have truly been valued. They offered inspiration and practical insight to our colleagues and students alike. Your passion for education- Your passion for education and commitment to excellence has left a meaningful impact on us all. Thank you for representing the best of what teachers can achieve. Having you serve as this year's Teacher of the Year has been an honor. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Joy Hill.
All right, and we're going to mix things up a little bit from what we normally do. Normally, we hear from Mr. Hill, but it's in September, we missed one for obvious reasons, or I guess it would have been October one. So we've passed that on to our new Teacher of the Year. And during this time, we want to introduce a video to the board. This is the Everyday Hero video, and I want to tell you how this came about. Ms. Hamby and I put our heads together and talked about what we could do special here at the end of the school year, and we liked the idea of being able to have each of our schools honor somebody that they considered to be their everyday hero. They then invited those people in and surprised them at their school. Mr. Barry Hill then took all the 45-second, excuse me, 45-second clips and put them together in this video. So in lieu of the presentation tonight, Mr. Hill, we thought we would show this Everyday Hero video so the board and the community could see who our schools felt like were our everyday heroes. Once we air this tonight, we will put this out on our social media pages, so everybody will have an opportunity to see it. But Mr. Barry Hill, if you will, take it away.
I'm Tracy Woodman, the Principal of East McDowell Middle School, and I've got the lovely Jennifer Franklin with me. Who doesn't know why she's here? She's a little mysterious. Our school, East McDowell Middle, wants to recognize Jennifer Franklin as our Everyday Hero.
Oh my gosh! 2024, 2025 school year! The reason is simple.
Jennifer pours her heart into making a difference in the lives of students and staff at East McDowell Middle. She embodies the Trojan spirit. She's dedicated, compassionate, and selfless. She is our daily support. She's not gone.
I'm not!
Congratulations Jennifer, you have made a difference every single day at East McDowell Middle.
Thank you.
Your dedication and hard work inspire us all and have made a lasting impact on your students and staff. Thank you for being our Everyday Hero.
Thank you, I love you guys. Everybody, I love you all, thank you.
My name is Billy Klein, and I'm the Principal of McDowell Academy for Innovation. Today, I would like to recognize Ms. Wilma Elliott as our Everyday Hero. Ms. Elliott has been a huge impact on the students and families of McDowell County Schools for almost 50 years, serving as a math teacher at several high schools in the county. Ms. Elliott, thank you so much for your dedication, your willingness, and the contribution you've made to my life and the lives of many others in our area.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Adam Wiseman, Principal of North Cove Elementary. Our school wants to recognize Ms. Glenda Glenn as our Everyday Hero for the 2024-2025 school year. We are proud to recognize Ms. Glenn as our Everyday Hero. Ms. Glenn joined the North Cove family just after Christmas as our interim school counselor, and from day one, she has gone above and beyond to support both our students and staff. Her unwavering commitment to putting students first, her positive attitude, tireless work ethic, and genuine heart for children truly embody what it means to be an Everyday Hero. We are so grateful to have Ms. Glenn as part of our North Cove family. Congratulations, Ms. Glenn, for making a difference at our school. Your dedication and hard work inspire us all and have a lasting impact on our students, staff, and community.
Congratulations, Ms. Glenn, you've been nominated for McDowell County Schools' Everyday Hero.
Oh, you're a kid! Oh, how wonderful!
So thank you for all you do.
This has meant so much to me, thank you so much.
The Principal of Foothills Community School, and I have with me Ms. Brittany DePeters. They help us out all the time here at Foothills Community School, and so we wanted to present her with this award.
My name is Deanna Ray, and I'm the Principal at Glenwood Elementary School. Our school wants to recognize Betty Ross as our Everyday Hero for the 24-25 school year. Mrs. Ross is a retired educator from Glenwood Elementary School. She was a teacher and counselor at Glenwood for many years. She spent her career advocating for children. Her retirement has been no different. Following her retirement, Mrs. Ross has continued to volunteer at Glenwood. She mentors a group of students once a week and has done so since her retirement. She also serves as a parent surrogate for Glenwood and other schools advocating for students with the greatest needs. Thank you, Ms. Ross, for making a difference at our school and in our community. Your dedication and hard work inspire us all and have a lasting impact on our students, staff, and community. Thank you for being an Everyday Hero.
It has been my pleasure for the last three months being the Principal at McDowell Early College. And when I go around classes all day, I see people who really work and do the extra things that make it a great place to learn for all kids, and someone that never stops working, and someone who every day outworks anyone else on this campus, I see. And I very appreciate what she does, and I see the impact she does on kids. So my Everyday Hero Award for McDowell Early College goes to Ms. Brittany.
Oh, thank you! That's so sweet! Oh, thank you!
Thank you, thank you.
Marion Elementary is proud to recognize Stephanie Goodrow as our Everyday Hero. As the community representative on our school improvement team, she brings a strong voice and steady support to our school. Stephanie is our liaison with First United Methodist Church of Marion, coordinating everything from snack donations for our nurses and teachers to leading the Adopt a Teacher program. She also works with our beautification team and recently gathered volunteers to help reopen our nature trail. Stephanie's heart for service makes a lasting impact, and we're so grateful for all she does.
Hey, I'm Erin Rayfield, Principal of Pleasant Gardens Elementary School. We want to recognize Greta Goodson as our Everyday Hero for the 2024-2025 school year. Ms. Goodson goes above and beyond to support the students and staff at PG. Ms. Greta comes in to sub, makes copies for teachers, runs errands, reads with students, buys Christmas gifts for families, and so much more. Congratulations, Ms. Goodson, for making a difference at our school! Your dedication and hard work inspires us and has a lasting impact on our school and community. Thank you for being an Everyday Hero.
Thank you!
Hello, I'm Rodney Wheeler, Director at the Sunland Academy. Our school wants to recognize Lincoln Pupoe as our Everyday Hero for this school year. Link arrives early every day, attends everything, Chromebook-wise, from checking stuff in to making sure they're signed out. You can always find him interacting with students, assisting with technology issues, academic issues, and maybe even playing a card game or two. By the way, he is the Uno Champion. Link is the student whisperer, and there's no voodoo involved. Congratulations, Mr. Pupoe, for making a difference at our school. Your dedication and hard work inspire us all and have a lasting impact on our students, staff, and community. Thank you for being an Everyday Hero.
Hello, my name is Edwina Spivey, Principal of West McDowell Middle School. Our school would like to recognize Ms. Crystal Marsh as our Everyday Hero for the 24-25 school year.
Woo! There you go!
The reason for this selection is Ms. Marsh, or Mama Marsh, as she is known to many at West McDowell Middle, is often the first face you see when you walk through our school doors. She makes everyone feel welcome, whether she's answering the phone, greeting parents, or managing situations with a nurturing demeanor. Her voice is both powerful, and her personality is impactful. She is the glue that holds us together. We would like to express our gratitude for your patience, kindness, and efficiency. Thank you for all the little things that you do and the big things that you do for West McDowell Middle School to make it such a great place every single day. You are the heart of our school. Congratulations, Ms. Marsh, for making a difference.
Crystal Marsh shows love through her contagious laughter, amazing dance moves, school spirit, and listening ear. As soon as you enter the doors of West Middle, you are greeted with kindness and compassion. Her unwavering care and dedication have made a lasting impact on the entire school. Mama Marsh, we love you and we appreciate everything you do for us.
I think Ms. Marsh is a hero more so because she's always here for people, and she's a very solid person in the school, and you can always run to her for anything.
Today, I want to recognize someone who truly embodies what it means to be an Everyday Hero, McDowell High School English teacher, Mr. Samuel Roy. Mr. Roy puts in countless hours outside the classroom to make sure not only our students, but families across McDowell County are supported and cared for. He leads initiatives like Mr. MHS, a fundraiser that provides critical help to families in need, which is no small feat. As the leader of student council who are surrounding us today, Mr. Roy models servant leadership daily, organizing proms, dances, and community service projects that bring people together. Even after suffering major damage to his own property during Hurricane Colleen, he continued showing up, volunteering, supporting students, and putting others first. Samuel Roy just doesn't talk about making a difference, he lives it. And so, Mr. Roy, on behalf of McDowell County Schools, I want to give you this certificate of recognition to Mr. Samuel Roy. He is McDowell High School's Everyday Hero.
It is my pleasure to recognize someone very special at Old Ford Elementary School, Mr. Steve Ray, our school custodian, but truly so much more. He is truly our Everyday Hero. Mr. Steve keeps our building and grounds looking perfect, but that's just the beginning. He encourages students, he prays for us, and sets an example every day as a role model. He can fix absolutely anything. During Hurricane Colleen, when our school was displaced, he coordinated the massive job of moving furniture, made thousands of trips storing supplies, and never once complained. He kept a positive spirit the whole time. And if you've ever heard one of Mr. Steve's stories, you know he can make you laugh until you cry. Mr. Steve Ray, thank you for being the heart of our school.
Hi, I'm Ashley Bagwell, Principal at Nevo Elementary School. I have with me Ms. Christina Wooten. She is our Everyday Hero. Ms. Wooten was selected for this award because she builds strong, meaningful relationships with our students through lunch groups, with our families, with our staff, and our community as a whole. She not only supports our students at school through academics, she also makes sure that their basic needs are met: food, water, clothing, housing items. She just does it all. Ms. Wooten also collaborates greatly with our community partnerships in this effort, and we could not think of a better person to be our Everyday Hero at Nevo Elementary than Ms. Christina Wooten.
Thank you.
What's going on, are you? I'm good. What's going on? Well, I've got something for you. It is an award, and it is from McDowell County Schools, and it is the Everyday Hero Awarded. To remind us all that heroes are commodities, turning ordinary moments into extraordinary impacts.
Hello, I'm Melissa Elliott, Principal of Eastfield Global Magnet School. It is my honor to recognize someone who truly embodies the spirit of service and community, Pastor Terry Roach. Roach and his church have been unwavering pillars for our school. Through their generous contributions to our shared cart, we have access to essential items like shampoo, soap, toothpaste, and hairbrushes, small things that make a big difference in a child's daily life. But Pastor Roach's support doesn't stop there. He visits our school regularly, checking in with a caring heart and a willingness to help however he can. He and his church have provided meaningful activities for the Eastfield community throughout the year, and this past Christmas, they brought joy and relief to eight families with their incredible support. Each week, Pastor Roach also leaves the Good News Club, offering students who wish to attend a safe, welcoming space to grow in faith and friendship. Terry Roach is more than a pastor, he is a consistent present leader and a friend to our entire school community. That's why we are proud to recognize him today as our Everyday Hero. Thank you Pastor Roach for all you do.
Well guys, we're up in Mooresville, North Carolina. We thought we'd stop by the drag strip. We're really gripping on heat, sleeper forerunner today.
And Mrs. Daddel, we don't have any requests addressable. Okay, thank you. Item number 11 on our agenda is unfinished business. And I wanted to be able to introduce this gentleman myself, Mr. Chad Marsh. Talking about Everyday Heroes, Mr. Marsh, I appreciate everything that you do. A lot of your feats go unnoticed, but I can assure you, here on the board, we see them, we appreciate them. And I know you're a man that doesn't accept accolades real well, but I just wanted to know my appreciation for you, sir, and the board's appreciation for what you do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be remiss if I didn't take just a second to say, the one lady there from West, I happen to know pretty well, and really, really proud of my wife. I think that's a really, that's an incredibly important thing that you did, Mr. Superintendent, to get that program rolling along with Mrs. Hamby, because I, you know, as someone who gets a chance to work with some of our non-certified staff every single day, I can tell you, McDowell County Schools doesn't operate without them, and so I really appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, and ladies and gentlemen, it's again my pleasure to provide an update of operations, auxiliary services, and athletics. Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we talk about, some of our operations folks, you know, Mr. Garrett Berryhill being here tonight amongst them, again, I think sometimes it goes unnoticed, but just how much work he and Mr. Thomas and Mr. Haynes and Mr. Vaughn are able to do within our operations, auxiliary divisions is just really eye-watering. For instance, Mr. Thomas and his staff have been diligently working to assist with bus allocation of the summer programs, conducting parts inventories, and performing incredibly important bus inspections and repairs. While Mr. Garrett Berryhill and his staff have been working the testing of our new temperature sensors, Mr. Suddles, that we have talked about for a while, and initial testing has really proven to be promising there. With students, I've been assisting with students getting out of the buildings there, and so we can be able to move forward migrating the remaining schools to their new subnets, and this will significantly improve our network speeds and reliability and security across our district. They're working through our updated cybersecurity insurance application for this year and finalizing grant applications. For instance, with our COPS, CSVPP, or School Violence Prevention Program, Garrett and I are working closely to get that grant out the door. And then certainly with our Chromebook reallocation, which is And then, certainly with our Chromebook reallocation, which is important every year. Mr. Haynes and his staff have been working diligently to ensure that each one of our children within the school system will be able to eat federally, federal child nutrition programs, and claim reimbursement for those meals, and I'm happy to report that they've finalized our annual agreement there. Also been working with contractors and staff at Old Ford Elementary School to ensure that our kitchen is ready to receive children upon arrival this August. And athletics, we're happy to report that we had three new bleachers delivered to the school this past week, and information about our summer camps has gone out, and the first one starts today. I know there's a little girl who was excited to go up and play some volleyball this afternoon. Mr. Jeff Vaughn in our auxiliary's division has been absolutely wonderful thus far. He is attentive, and he's hard-working, everything that I could have asked for. Playgrounds, playgrounds, and more playgrounds seems to be one of the issues that we're addressing. We have new playgrounds at North Cove Elementary and West Marion. A new playground will be installed to replace the damaged system at Marion for Mrs. Wilkerson this month. A playground that was ordered and delivered for Nebo for Mrs. Bagwell prior to my arrival will be erected over the summer by the original manufacturer, allowing us to keep the warranty. And finally, we were happy to assist with Dr. Croymans and her team with procurement of adaptable swings, and after they arrive, McDowell County Schools personnel will install them at various locations that she appoints throughout the district. This means that children who might not otherwise get to play with their peers have an opportunity to swing alongside of them, and that's super important. Remediation repairs of the water damage caused by the broken braided line at Eastfield Global Magnet School nears completion with the exception of some base trim and a few finishes, so we're in the short rows, as we say. We're working to convert areas of West McDowell Middle School to create an incredibly important self-contained EC classroom over the summer, and Dr. Croymans has been incredibly hard-working and easy to work with as we begin to go out there and identify a classroom along with Mr. Spivey there that will suit the needs of those children. We continue to work with FEMA and local contractors to remove debris, as well as make repairs to areas that were damaged. And this summer, we have finally received all of our Knox boxes, and we will begin installation of those at various locations throughout the district this summer to improve our responsiveness and security. Finally, with our auxiliaries, we are kicking off our summer painting and floor cleaning programs, which is always an important way to refurbish our schools. Pleasant Gardens Elementary School, we have completed our agreement with Pleasant Gardens Baptist Church, and with the exception of replacing a few ceiling tiles that were damaged by a leaky toilet, we're out of their way, and those will be replaced this week or as soon as they come in. We worked with our insurance claims manager, who has agreed to cover the interior cleaning and painting of that entire school. We met with contractor Belfour today, who walked through the entire school with us to try to get a good assessment of what it was that they would need to do before providing a proposal, and we're working, continue to work to gather quotes for the remediation and expenditure of the $1 million grant that Mrs. Rampy and I worked to be awarded recently. On to Old Ford Elementary School. Mr. Chairman, I am, continue to be confident, sir, that we will be able to open school for students in August of this year. I believe we'll be able, Dr. Gritt and I will be able to work together to find a timeline that will be inside of that to provide that Mrs. Ward, at which time he will notify you, sir. A thorough walkthrough was completed on Tuesday, the 20th of May, by McDowell County Schools' personnel, Principal Ward, and Belfour representatives. The result of this comprehensive walkthrough was a nine-page hit list, or punch list, that Belfour's been working on since we completed it, sir. This is expected to be completed in the month of July, and with the exception of some long lead time items such as backsplash and a couple kick plates, everything is pretty much in place. I'm also happy to report, sir, that as of this afternoon, McDowell County Schools received a certificate of completion from McDowell County Building Inspector, Mr. Jay Suddles, for Old Ford Elementary School. The reason that we did this, sir, was after a discussion with Dr. Gritt, we just wanted to make certain that we included all of our partners and had as many eyes on that elementary school prior to opening as we could, so that everyone felt comfortable and satisfied with the measures that we've taken. Mr. Suddles reported that he felt like we went overboard in some cases, and he was very pleased with what we did. Remediation is ongoing, sir. Again, just as a cursory, HVAC has been completed, and air quality inspections has been deemed satisfactory. The florings have completed, the walls are completed. Case work in cabinetry, there's some linear feet of backsplash, as we mentioned earlier, is identified as being damaged or missing that will be replaced. Then, the contract continues to work on the process of finishing the door item, which includes installation hardware and placing exterior door sweeps. The furniture from Verco, the vendor has been approved. Mrs. Rampy and myself worked with the claims manager to make sure that those items were approved, and they will be onsite the week of 7th of July to assemble all of the equipment that was deemed to be damaged or lost during the hurricane. Structurally, as a reminder, we have an inspection that was completed, and it's been deemed to be structurally sound and safe for your occupancy. The grounds, the sediment testing, as a reminder, was completed, and the grounds are deemed to be safe. We have grass growing in areas that were recently filled with dirt and debris. Our playground sidewalks and exterior building have all been pressure washed to fidelity, they look great, and our natural areas in front of the school have received mulch. Finally, an area of erosion that we have identified near Mill Creek that's adjacent to the walking track, we're in the process of receiving proposals for remediation of those, and we're working with FEMA to cover the cost. Mr. Chairman, this completes my report this evening, sir. We're happy to answer any questions from you or any of the members of the board.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Marsh, I just want to add to that. Going out to Old Ford this morning, and Mr. Schuford had a chance to visit out there as well, just to see the smiles on those teachers' faces getting back in that building. It's big, and we just want to appreciate the work that you've done, and just thank you for helping us get those teachers back in the building, and know that we're headed that direction with our students, and it's been a long time coming.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next up, we've got Ms. Suzanne Rampy will be giving us a finance update. A little different of a finance update tonight, we will be talking about our consolidation project, so I've asked Ms. Rampy to provide us with some figures on that. Thank you.
Before I get started on that, I just wanted to also make a note of two items that are in your consent agenda. These are normal end-of-the-year resolutions. One is for the interim budget resolution, so basically that gives us the authority to pay salaries or normal expenses until the budget is approved from the state. And then the other item is the budget resolution for budget amendments, and that is notification that we will, anything that happens between now and June 30th, we will give that to you in your next board meeting. Okay, so first thing I wanted to talk about was, in the consolidation that we spoke about with consolidating two schools, there would be several moves, and there are some cost savings related to that. The first one would be, we would move our central services and move Summit Academy along with that into one centralized location. A couple of the benefits of that would be both instructional and operational support would be in one location. Currently, we have several locations across the county where operational support is located. It would also create additional space for board meetings, including additional space for events or guest parking, et cetera. For the Summit Academy integration, that does support growth. Currently, where we're at is limited in the number of students that we can provide services for, so that would allow us some growth there. If we did see growth, if we get at least 100 students at Summit, it does allow us a principal allotment from the state. At the 100-student mark, that is when the state does allocate a principal position there. It would also allow us to provide onsite nutrition services for better student support. Currently, we are bringing the meals to the Summit students every day from another site, and so we would be able to make those and create a nutritional service there and a cafeteria there. Improve traffic flow, site accessibility, and reduction of rental expenses. We're currently renting that space that the Summit Academy is located. Some of the other benefits would be staffing efficiencies. When you're combining two locations, you would have some staffing efficiencies there, and through attrition, we would look at efficiencies in those positions. Operational cost reductions, we would have some lower utility costs by reducing the number of facilities that we have. We are looking at around $50,000 for that per year. We would have a decreased cost for nutritional services because we would go from two locations to one by combining two schools. Also, there's an opportunity to optimize transportation routes and just improve efficiency overall, both in maintenance and any other operational expenses that we have there. And then also, if we were to sell the surplus facility that we had, we could use those funds to offset any cost to build the new school or for any land cost at that time. And that is a quick summary. Obviously, there's a lot more work to do there and a lot more detailed work to do when we do combine two facilities, but those are some of the bigger items that we would have, and some just non-financial benefits that we would see as well. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Ms. Rampy. Next item we've got on the agenda is North Carolina School-Based Capital Grants discussion, and tonight, folks, I will be, board, I will be asking for action to be taken on this item. I want to go back through and talk about the history of this program and what's been going on there. So, at this point, we've picked up 120-day due diligences on two pieces of property as part of work that we're trying to do to be able to apply for a grant to be able to build a new school. And that's exciting, but I mean, there's a whole lot of things between now and that timeframe. One of those pieces, and it may seem early, but I just want to remind folks that there are three really big pieces to the rubric that the state looks at when you're going to build a new school. One of those is being shovel-ready, meaning you've got a plan with an architect. The other one is, a Tier 1 county is given an additional score in the rubric. And anytime you can consolidate facilities, that is the, those three things, when you can put those three things together, you are the most, you have the highest score on the rubric and stand the best chance at earning the grant. I'll remind the board, those grants are $42 million for an elementary school, $52 million for a middle school, and $62 million for a high school. I will tell you, with the, and you guys are well aware, with the number of studies that we have done, and they've isolated a location for the properties to be within roughly a mile and a half, somewhere in that neighborhood radius of East McDowell Middle School, so we were able to find, and two pieces of property entered into contracts on those two pieces of property. Of course, we only want to buy one of those pieces of property, we know that, but those are all the things leading up to that. I want to take that a step further. Over the past couple of weeks since our last board meeting, I've had individual staff meetings at both Marion Elementary School and Eastfield Global Magnet School, because one of the things I wanted to do was talk with the staff and make sure they understood what we were doing. We've talked about McDowell County Schools has had a decline in enrollment due to population and growth in the district, so combining schools with large numbers really wouldn't work, but because we've had smaller class sizes coming through those schools over the last little bit, and looking at the numbers basically from the NC State Study Group, that was really one of the best models to be able to look at a consolidation. The biggest questions that they had weren't about whether they needed a new school, but it was about staffing, which Ms. Rampy just spoke to you about. No positions would be gone unless through attrition, so I think that was important. They also wanted to know about schedules, and timeframes, and curriculums, and different things like that, and I eased their mind by having a conversation with them to say, "We're really early to be having those conversations. The first thing we need to do is secure $42 million to be able to say, we're going to be able to build a school." In order to do that, what I would ask the board to do tonight would be to consider that consolidation of those two schools. Why is that so important at this point? In order to be shovel-ready and have this grant written by January, we need to put out an RFQ for our architect. We really need to have that put out tomorrow, just to be completely honest with you. We can put an RFQ out tomorrow, that gives the scope of the work to the architect, so they would know what they were looking at. So, in July, we would bring back to the board an RFQ for the architect, which then could begin designing the plans. So, that's a whole lot of moving parts, to say that, I feel like we've spoken with faculty. We had, Mr. Suddles, you were present with us in the meeting. We had great faculty meetings with both of those school staffs, I felt very strongly about it. We followed up back with our principals. Ms. Wilkerson's there in the back of the room, we had some great conversations with the staff there, and since then, I think we put a lot of the rumor mill, if you will, we put a lot of those rumors behind us. Yes, there's going to be difficult decisions to make. What's the mascot going to be? What are the school colors going to be? What's the name going to be? What's the calendar going to be? All those are questions that we know we don't have answers to right now, but the one thing that I can say that we do know is we need $42 million in order to build this school. And the next step for us in order to do that is to, what I would ask the board is to, I'm going to recommend that you consolidate, or you're proposing for the North Carolina Capital Grant, that we consolidate Eastfield Global Magnet School and Marion Elementary School, and I would open the floor up for any questions and entertain that.
Okay, the floor is open for any questions, and if there are no questions, I'll take your time, if there are questions, that's fine, but at the point there are no more questions, Dr. Gritt has asked for, entertain a motion to approve the North Carolina School-Based Capital Grants action there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward based on the groundwork and consideration we've given in combining Marion Elementary and Eastfield Global Magnet School, and that we go forth with an application for the North Carolina School-Based Capital Grant to make this happen.
Do we have a second?
Last second, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Franklin, while we're doing this, I think it's important that we go on record too, to say, as, you know, for me, as a representative of Marion, I want to make sure that all the teachers, the kids, the students feel safe and comfortable, and let Marion Elementary and Eastfield know that we're going to do everything we can to make it jail for them as a staff, and not cut any corners on what they need over there to make this not only successful, but to be a great environment for our elementary school, and just like we would for Old Ford Elementary and some of the others too, but that they've got our back, and they can come to us with any questions throughout that process that they may have for us to answer.
Ms. Helms, being represented from the city as well, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd really support and echo what Donnie said, and support everything that's needed or the community needs in terms of the condition.
Mr. Barkstel?
I just think after we had our meeting today, we need to just make sure that everybody understands that these positions that we'll be losing will be lost due to attrition, and that's one of the important things that I would like to echo, but everything also, I just want to thank you all for all the work you've put into it.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Schuford, a second by Mr. Baker. Discussion's been had, great comments by Mr. Suddles, we appreciate that, we definitely got to keep that in mind, and as well as the other two representatives from Marion at large, Ms. Helms and Mr. Barkstel. With nothing else, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, you can file by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Does that get you where you want?
Yes, sir. Thank you, folks, I think that is a big step tonight, and I just want to remind everyone, grants are just that, they're grants. You know, they come around once a year, and you have an opportunity to apply for it, so we very well could get our grants submitted, and we hope, we hope we have everything the state is looking for, but just as a reminder, if we don't, then we have to wait another year in order to apply again. So, going ahead and having a plan, having our architect make some designs, having the property, all that stuff, that means when the state does give us the nod a year, two years, three years down the road, this board, I want to thank you for having the vision and the forethought, the foreshadowing, to know that that's what we needed in this community. So, thank you. But next, we've got Mr. Marsh with, under new business, will be the RFQ for the architects.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to yield to Mr. Barkstel, sir, on this particular item, to make sure that I understand what we're doing first, are we talking about the West McDowell Project, sir, or the RFQ that we just discussed?
The West McDowell Project, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This, I won't take long, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute, we are required to submit or to advertise for requests for qualifications for any single project that's greater than the amount of $300,000. One of the grants that Mrs. Rampey and I were able to work through and get approved was remediation after Hurricane Marlene, where the athletic field and area is commonly used for baseball, practice for soccer and football across from Lowe's on Highway 70. This was in the tune of $3 million. Those funds have been sent to the school system and required an RFQ to be submitted. We advertised the RFQ, sir, and we had one architect apply for the RFQ. It's my recommendation, sir, to the Board, that we accept this RFQ from Holland and Hamrick, sir.
Okay, and I saw the report in our package, and I hope other Board members saw it as well, were familiar with that firm. And at this time, Mr. Barksdale, I know you guys talked about that probably at today's meeting as well, is there anything that you want to add to it? And remember that action is requested, and he's asking for a motion for this.
No, I believe that he said it all, we just need to go ahead with the motion.
I'll make the motion that we employ Holland and Hamrick.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Abernathy and a second by Mr. Barksdale to go ahead with the RFQ request that Mr. Marsh has asked for. And at this time, is there any discussion on it?
I just got a question about it. So, with Holland and Hamrick, did we put out some kind of direction for them or for all the people to look at as far as what our idea and our plans were to do with that $3 million? Did we say we're doing the baseball field, are we doing softball, what are we doing down there? Did we put that out?
It's not required in RFQ, sir. All this is, is a request for qualification from an architect. The next phase for planning occurs after an architect's been selected.
Yeah, and I understand that, Chad. I would, I would suggest that in the future that we put a little bit of a note in there for that, because you will get more that are, have the desire to help us out. Like Holland and Hamrick, they've helped us out a lot, there's just so many more above them on field building that do a good job. And for $3 million, if you want to do it right, which is enough money to do it right, we need to make sure sometimes we have the best. So, just putting a note out there in the future, just saying, hey, this is what we're wanting to do, whether it's baseball, softball, cheerleading, platforms, whatever it may be, just making that a note, because you may entice some others. Nothing against Holland and Hamrick, they do good work in certain areas, but just for future purposes.
Now, thank you, Mr. Suddles. And I want to make it clear though, sir, we haven't decided what we're going to put down there.
Right.
Well, all we think that we put in there that was, we had $3 million for a grant through remediation. So, we haven't, we were planning on working with building and grounds, sir,
Okay.
To make sure that that next phase is planned. We haven't planned anything for it. There's been lots of discussions that's happened, but I didn't feel like that was in, within my purview, sir, to go out and make assumptions. And so, all we stated was that it was $3 million, that it was for remediation a part of that, and that it was going to occur in this location. And that's really, again, sir, just that baseline, but I understand what you want us to do, again, that was something that we were going to work with building and grounds to make happen. I've made sure that we've included Mr. Barksdale in all these conversations and that, all the members of the committee.
Sure. Absolutely, I just don't want us to get somewhere to where we've got a grant and they come back and they have expected us to do something, and we had no intentions of doing that, and that's part and utter of remediation, to where we step into something that we can't get out of. That's where I was looking at it, but, yeah. Thanks, Chad.
Yes, sir. Mr. Superintendent, before I sit down, I just want to ask one question on the motion that, the second, the motion that was made a minute ago, not on this one, but the particular one for the RFQ.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know, Mr. Barksdale, you weren't planning on doing that, I don't think, tonight. Was the motion that was included for moving ahead with the consolidation, did that include the RFQ to be able to go out and solicit?
Sir, it did not necessarily, it just included the North Carolina School-Based Capital Grant. I don't know necessarily that we needed, we knew that that was part of, what we have to do as part of that grant, so I didn't know if I needed a separate motion in that, I didn't feel like we did.
Not trying to step on you, sir, I just wanted to give an opportunity to Mr. Barksdale when he comes to that point, if he wants to bring it back up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Any questions for me, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Hamby.
Wait just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
We have voted yet.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
You're fine.
Ready to go.
Okay, I'm kind of confused there a little bit on Mr. Marsh's request of Mr. Barksdale about the two RFQs. The one that we approved, I mean, the capital grants thing, we didn't request an RFQ. We are requesting an RFQ for this West McDowell Middle School ball field.
Exactly. We'll be going into the, I'm assuming y'all are referring to the HVAC, we'll be doing that later.
Yes, sir. No, let me be clear, the RFQ for the new school, that is part of the process that we will have to do moving forward. So, the RFQ that we're looking at tonight is only for the field. Because those are separate items, we will need to put out another RFQ as part of the North Carolina Capital Grant proposal that we'll be doing. So, it was one of those that, it didn't require Board action necessarily, because it's the next step in that phase. What would, what would be required for the Board action would then be the, which RFQ, which group of architects that we will then select for that project. So, really, all we needed was the capital grant to, so we knew a scope and a sequence of the work, so then we can publish that and put that, put that out there for proposal. So, that one did not require Board. For the HVAC project that we talked about today, Mr. Barksdale, just to be completely honest with you, I've looking in here and it really, it's not showing up on this agenda, is it?
No, sir.
So, that would be my error in that, I don't see a place in the agenda for that. If you would like to entertain that, we may, it may be something where we would have to amend this agenda, Mr. Frank.
We will have to.
And that would be a mistake on my part. So, I don't see it in here on the agenda, and it's an oversight on my part that we did not. And folks, just to let you know what we were talking about, we do have some HVAC work that we need to get done over the summer. We had the discussion in building and grounds, and there was just a miscommunication on my part as to where we would put this in the agenda. But, sir, I do believe we would have to have an emotion to amend the agenda.
You want me to do that? I'd like to make that a motion.
I think so, so we can then bring that up.
But we'd have to have the vote first.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we include the HVAC project. Yeah, yeah, hold on one second. Okay, we still got the matter of the RFQ for the West McDowell Middle School ball field to vote on.
Oh, okay.
Before we can do anything. Okay. With everything said, and I apologize, but I want to be perfectly clear, and I want the Board members to be clear on everything that we're doing right now, it's a lot of money. And so, I'm asking for a vote on the request for the, for the RFQ to approve Holland and Hamrick, that the motion that was made by Mr. Abernathy, seconded by Mr. Barksdale, we had our discussion, and now we're going to take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Now, Mr. Barksdale, you can, if you would like, to make a motion to amend the agenda, and you got to tell, and if you'd like to discuss with Dr. Gritt real quickly, why, what we need to amend the agenda to.
Dr. Gritt, I believe we just need to amend this to include the HVAC project at Eastfield Global Magnet.
Yes, sir.
And also, go ahead.
There was, there were a number of
Number of
HVAC issues that we had. Those HVAC issues, anything more than that $50,000 threshold, we would have to request Board recommendation to, to ask the county for our funds that they hold for us to be able to utilize to get those fixes. So, we know, and we've known for a long time, we had ongoing issues with some of our HVAC systems. So, this is an attempt to get many of those projects up and completed this summer, so we're ready by the fall. And again, Mr. Barksdale, my apologies for not having that on the agenda, it's certainly an oversight.
No problem. I'd like to make a motion that we include all HVAC projects, amend the agenda, include those.
Okay. Need a second.
I'll say it.
We have a motion by Mr. Barksdale and a second by Mr. Allison to amend the agenda to include all the HVAC projects that we need to do over the summer. Is there any further discussion?
And this amendment is just for the RFQ? It doesn't have a budget?
There's no, there's no RFQ on this. This is, this is basically, we need to get some work done, and I'd like to have Mr. Marsh, if you can, step back up, once we take a vote on it, so he'll be able to share with you what those projects are more specifically, and I've just left it off the agenda.
All right, before I vote on it, I'm actually looking for a budget number, is what I was looking for.
He's got that.
Before I vote on it.
Yes, sir.
Should I just stay up here and follow that? We need a vote to amend the agenda before we move to the RFQ. I need a, I've got a first, a motion was made by Mr. Barksdale to amend the motion, a second by Mr. Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to vote on it now and then we'll do the other?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're voting on the amendment?
But we, I've asked for discussion, and he brought up the discussion.
Yes, sir.
And so, let's go ahead and have this discussion, and then we'll vote, if that's fair with everybody.
Yes, sir, that's proper. So, you're in line. Yes, sir, I'll be happy to provide clarification. So, the request through building and grounds was to come to the Board tonight and make a motion for a capital project. I've requested that a capital project be written not to exceed $150,000. We have one single project that is in excess of the Board limit that has been levied to the Superintendent of $50,000. That's why I'm bringing the capital project before the Board. The one project that is above $50,000 is replacing a failed cooling tower at Eastfield Global Magnet School. The reason the tower has failed is because of dissimilar metals, the bottom of the tank is galvanized, it should be stainless. That project will be completed this summer by the same local contractor who has provided water source services to McDowell County Schools for decades, Piatt Heating and Cooling. They provided, they're a single-source vendor, and they provided a proposal as we have in hand. The rest of the dollars that I'm requesting, sir, will be used for various items, not one single item will go above the $50,000 threshold, the Superintendent has the authority to approve. The reason we're requesting a capital project is Mrs. Rampey's educated, is that she can then take that to the county, and that that, those capital dollars will be used from that allocation as opposed to local funds that she has on hand.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or any questions for Mr. Marsh?
No, that's great, thank you, Chad, for doing that.
I apologize for all the confusion. It was not my intention. I threw a monkey in, and I'm sorry.
No, we're good, we're good, okay. With everything being said, we have a motion by Mr. Barksdale, a second by Mr. Allison. There's no further discussion on the amendment
Amendment.
To the agenda. So, with all that being said, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous. Now, what we need to bring next is the HVA Capital Project Contract, a motion to approve that.
I'd like to make the motion to approve general HVAC project in an amount not to exceed 150 to address the various HVAC needs
Second.
Throughout the district. This includes approval of the contract with Piatt Heating and Air in the amount of $70,000 for HVAC work at Eastfield Global Magnet.
Second. Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Barksdale, we have a second by Mr. Abernathy to approve the capital project not to exceed 150,000, am I correct on that?
Exactly.
And the contractor that's going to do it, Piatt, is the contractor?
You're right.
Okay.
Of the one single project.
You're right, at the Eastfield Global Magnet School.
That's right, sir.
Okay. Now, is there any further discussion on the amendment, I mean, excuse me, on the motion? Okay, all right, we have a motion by Mr. Barksdale, we have a second by Mr. Abernathy. We have discussed it, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of the capital project signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Okay. And that's it for Mr. Marsh.
Yes, sir. Again, I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to throw a wrench in, I was just trying to be thorough, and I apologize.
No, no, I appreciate you pointing it out, as, when you stepped away, I recognized it wasn't on there, so that's okay, we just missed it. All right, next up, we have Head Start, or, I'm sorry, the Leader in Me contract, Ms. Hamby has a proposal for you, and this was in your Board packet.
Good evening, it is an honor to stand before you again tonight to present the Leader in Me contract. The Leader in Me is an evidence-based program, a school-based improvement framework for pre-K-12 schools, and it's rooted in the seven habits of highly effective people. It empowers students with critical leadership, goal-setting, and communication skills while equipping educators with the tools to create a positive and engaging learning environment. This initiative supports our district's goal of enhancing student engagement, academic achievement, and career and college readiness. Leader in Me has proven to reduce absenteeism, improve teacher effectiveness, enhance student outcomes, and has an improvement on student mental health, making it a valuable investment in our school's success. The funds for this program are already in the state-approved school safety grant and accounted for in that approved budget. I want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Ashley McArthur for her hard work and for securing the grant funds for McDowell County Schools. We respectfully request the Board's approval to allocate the grant funds for the invoiced amount to implement the Leader in Me program in our middle schools of West McDowell and East McDowell Middle Schools.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Suddles, we have a second by Ms. Helms to approve the Leader in Me contract that Ms. Hamby has just told us about. Now, is there any further discussion concerning the Leader in Me contract?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm all for students taking up responsibility and leadership, and I appreciate the effort y'all have put in marching towards that, and it's reflected in the school, anytime we go up there, I mean, these kids are absolutely phenomenal. I do have some concerns about this particular program, and I'm just kind of curious, I've got a couple of questions. It's not actually a curriculum, and it's not actually a, it's more like a culture model for the school.
That's right.
And you indicated that there's some kind of proof, like, has this been studied independently, like, third-party, where they've actually shown, like, positive results in implementing it?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It is an evidence-based program that has been shown and does have third-party research.
Okay, and as part of the contract, are we required as a school to kind of promote this to other schools?
In the sense of, as far as, do we want to include other schools as we begin to progress along with this contract, or are we required to market this program?
The marketing aspect of it.
We do not necessarily have to do that. For example, we know which counties have Leader in Me, and we've had an opportunity to visit, like, we have visited Henderson County, we've also had Leader in Me at Old Ford Elementary, and so, there's nothing that says that we have to market for them. Does that answer your question?
So, it's not explicit in the contract, if we go this route, we don't have to go to other schools and say, "Hey, as part of it, you guys need to look at this," nothing like that?
No, sir, that's
It's part of the contract?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, as far as the cost of it, I was looking at the handout that we got, and was talking about the subscription fees and whatnot.
Yes.
Is there any other additional cost associated with any kind of training for teachers? Is there any other additional cost associated with any kind of training for teachers or students?
So, it's the original first year, which we have secured the funds through the school safety grant, which is what we're requesting action for tonight. And then, if we, as we continue in year two and three, uh, there will be additional costs for those years and then we've also have written grants to cover those additional costs as well as partnered with Leader in Me. This is the Covey Institute. Uh, we have partnered with them to also, um, to have support from one of their grant writers as well to help us to secure the funding as we continue through years two and three.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McGinnis, I'd also add, this has been a, a program as a superintendent group that we have been studying this year. There'll be a number of districts who are attempting to bring this into their, to their districts, had, had an opportunity to, uh, not only see it in action but to see it before, you know, many, many years. It's not, not necessarily a new program, but there, there is a success rate for it and, and I would, I would stand firmly behind this and I think it's a great program. I really do.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Settles. We have a second by Mrs. Helms. We've had discussion, uh, concerning the Leader in Me contract and it's, there is action requested and at this time, I'm asking for those that are in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamby, I think you guys can just stay right up there. We've got the Head Start Non-Federal Share Waiver, Change in Scope. I know Dr. Delaney was going to be speaking with us as well as I've asked Ms. Rampy to talk with the group because there is a financial component to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Grit, Guest. Tonight I have two items on the agenda for your approval. They will require separate action. The first item is our Head Start Non-Federal Match Waiver for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The Head Start Act mandates that grantees provide at least twenty percent of total program cost through non-federal sources. These contributions can come from cash donations, volunteer hours, in-kind services, or donated space. The total amount of non-federal match that is required for McDowell County Head Start is five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars and fifty-six. When a program cannot obtain the required amount of non-federal match, they are allowed to request a waiver and we have requested a waiver in the years past, consistently each year, we do request a waiver. Last year, we did request a waiver for two hundred and nine thousand. The year before that was two hundred and seven thousand, but this year, we only need to request a waiver for one hundred and eight, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. So, we did make a significant improvement on the amount of non-federal match that we collected this year, so we do not have to request as much of a waiver for this year. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the non-federal share waiver.
Senior Andy.
Great job.
Okay. At this time, she's asked for action on the Head Start Non-Federal Share Waiver. I'll entertain a motion for this approval.
I'll make a motion that we ask for the amount as given.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Settles and a second by Mr. Schuford. Is there any further discussion on the federal share waiver? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And you can proceed.
Thank you. I want to share an opportunity with you next that will help us make the most of our resources to strengthen our Head Start program. You did receive information in your packet about our current Head Start slots at our West Marion Head Start location. We're requesting your approval to relinquish unfilled slots at West Marion Elementary that have been vacant for almost three years. By taking this step, we can proactively request to maintain the funding tied to those slots, which we plan to reallocate to improve a more competitive wage for our Head Start employees. This would help us stay competitive, attract great talent, and support the staff who are critical to our program's success. We're excited about this plan's potential and with your approval, we can move forward with this request and submit it to the federal Head Start program.
Okay. All right. We've had a very condensed form of, we've got some extra funds. She's going to utilize them to help her staff increase in salaries, which they, which they greatly need. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion at this stage.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barksdale. We have a second by Mr. Allison to approve the rearrangement of the funds to help for salaries. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Ms. Delaney, do you think in the future you'd ever see a need to have that position back?
Um, it is just our Head Start slots that that is affecting at West Marion Elementary.
Okay.
We have currently two additional full-day programs at West Marion and a part-day pre-K at West Marion.
So, you're good. Okay. All right, thank you.
And no staff will be involved in that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Slots for all.
All right.
Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, sir?
If I may, Mr. Frank, I, I want to just say that with what y'all just did, it is important to remember that we have to gain approval federally before we can do anything. As much as I wish I could just waive that one and make, make those funds appear, what Dr. Delaney brought to us, we'll, we'll need that federal approval and then it is our goal to have comparable salaries. And I think that's something that that, that this board has been requesting from Head Start, Mr. Schuford, for, for some time, you know, going forward. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this is kind of like that new school, which is just a step in the right direction to be able to do some of those things. Thank you.
Do you have a timeline on that?
Dr. Delaney, do you have a, she stepped out. Oh, there she is.
I would love to say that it would get approved immediately, once it was permitted, but it is then at the request of the Office of Head Start when they approved that plan.
It's a good question, Mr. Barksdale. Thank you.
At this time, uh, we had, we're having board reports and Mr. Settles, curriculum and instruction.
Yes, although we have nothing curriculum-wise, I, I want to take the time to commend Ms. Hamby on that, the Leader in Me. Uh, I think we're in a time period to where we need to build leaders, uh, in children right now and for our future. And so, taking the steps to do that in McDowell County, I commend you for that and I'm looking forward to it, so thank you.
Mr. Barksdale, with Building and Grounds?
Yes, I have a few things. I, I knew tonight might be a little confusing with all the moving parts that we've been discussing. One thing I'd like the public to know is, um, just for their knowledge about the HVAC project, some of these units that we are replacing are forty years old. Some of the units that's being replaced have not been in operation for over three years and that's why it's so important for us to move forward this. And I appreciate, um, everybody's hard work in the Buildings and Grounds Committee to make this happen. Also, I would, um, I'd like to do, recommend a board discussion in closed session to discuss the acquisition of the real property, to include the properties we have under contract for due diligence. And the only other thing that I'd like to announce to the public is I'd like to ask for a walkthrough for the Old Fort School. And the date that I'm looking at is, if everybody agrees, uh, would be on July fourteenth, that is our next board meeting, but it would, uh, at a time that the board sees fit that we could have a walkthrough and anyone who would like to come and do the walkthrough would come through and, and, and look at the, the improvements and whatnot we've done in the Old Fort School. Does anybody have a time that they, before the board meeting? And is that an appropriate date?
As far as I'm concerned, it is.
We, we could potentially use a lunchtime, uh, date if folks would like to do that during, maybe they could come out during their lunch, lunchtime on the fourteenth is a possibility.
If everybody agrees to that, that'd be great.
Is that it, Mr. Barksdale? Mr. Schuford, you can go ahead and.
Excuse me. I have nothing further than what Ms. Rampy's already reported, but we will be having a, uh, finance committee meeting. There will be no action taken, but we'll be having that Wednesday at three o'clock.
Okay. And Ms. Helms, you're getting ready to get your hands full. So, go ahead and tell us about it.
Yes, it's my understanding that we just received our policies back from our attorney review today. We will be setting up a date and time for the coming week at today's meeting and where we'll review those finalized policies for presentation to the board for your review and approval. I would expect hopefully by the next board meeting.
Mr. Schuford, Head Start.
If you'll indulge me for just a minute, um, I'd like to make some comments regarding the Head Start Programs just in, in May, celebrated six decades and, uh, it's, uh, the Head Start Program, uh, I think, uh, we all know it focuses on family involvement, offering parent and caregiver support, such as job training, housing assistance, parenting coaching, and parents also taking leading roles as they do in a big way here in our Head Start Programs as classroom volunteers and serving on the, on the ground, on the council, excuse me. Uh, there's about seven hundred and fifty thousand infants, toddlers, and preschoolers that received services this year. And, uh, more than half of the programs are in rural communities where early care and learning opportunities can be especially hard to find. And I'd like to, uh, end this with a, with a comment that, uh, from the National Head Start Association, but, uh, it says, "Since its founding in nineteen sixty-five, Head Start has transformed the lives of more than forty million children and families across the nation, providing comprehensive early learning and childcare, better health and nutrition, and parent involvement services to eligible families across the United States." For six decades and eleven administrations, Head Start has had a proven impact, including children who are better prepared for kindergarten, that graduate from high school and college, and experience long-term health benefits. Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Schuford. NJROTC, and I know Mr. Baker and, uh, Mr. McGinnis have a lot to report there, man, they've got an active summer, so I'll turn it over to you guys. Mr. Frank, I'd like to say amen to what Ms. Schuford said there, uh, the Head Start Program and Dr. Delaney. And, uh, when, when you see, when you see those folks that, that work with her and they cry over these children, especially the, you know, some of them have really, uh, homes in which, uh, most of us didn't grow up with and, and they, they say they have them there for, I think someone says, six hours and they, they cry about having to send them home to some of the conditions that they have. These people care. And I never knew that much about Head Start, but I, I'd take my hat off if I wore one. I, it makes my head itch. I never wear one. Yeah, but what a program and what a job y'all have done and continue to do. We, we thank God for you and, and changing lives of these young, young children. And I'd like to, if you don't care, I'd like to digress a second. Mr. Marsh, I started to say it up there while he was up there and back to, uh, his walkthrough in Old Fort. And, Mr. Marsh, what did you call that? A punch?
Punch list, sir.
The punch list, he had nine pages?
Yes, sir.
Not terrible things, but things that, you know, I asked if he could help me build a house, he and Ms. Rampy, her financially and him with his eye, the things that just weren't quite right. They, they weren't safety factors or anything like that, they said, but, but nine pages of things that they held up money on until it was right, number one. And, uh, again, don't wear a hat, I'll take it off to you if it did. And then, uh, NJROTC, I'd like to read you a few things that's coming up. These folks, we're so proud of them and they're, they're so busy and so talented and so dedicated. Leadership Academy, they'll, they'll have, uh, June seventh through fourteenth, Master Chief Crosson and, uh, other NJROTC instructors. This is run in, in collaboration with, uh, other NJROTC units. Students will join other schools in a collaborative unit. These are the best individuals from each unit and they receive advanced leadership training and direction. Then, uh, June twelfth through fifteen, uh, some will be, uh, it's the Sail Academy. It's organized and ran by our, our NJROTC. This is run, ran in collaboration with other NJROTC units. Students will learn how to work on a sailboat. Derek wanted to go. He has to work there. June twenty-first, remember this. This will be a cadet-run car wash to fundraise for the unit. Uh, it says, "Feel free to express to friends and associates to come by and make a donation, support our NJROTC." We, they're forming leaders and I hope, I wish every one of them going to the military or, you know, but, well, even, no matter what they go into, they're, they're forming leaders here. Where is that going to be, sir? Uh, I'm sorry, at Advance Auto. Advance Auto, June twenty-first. Is that the time? Then, uh, no, he didn't. I'd say they'll be there pretty early. Warms up so much. Okay, then, uh, June seventh through eleventh, they'll have a basic leadership training, new cadet orientation, uh, with Sergeant, First Sergeant Miley. This is for new, new cadets and, uh, allows new staff to get a foundation. This is held at McDowell High School. Says, "Feel free to stop by eight until two and, uh, support them in that. Just say hello, just see what's going on. It's, it's wonderful." Then we have the CMP Summer Camp, Anniston, Alabama. That's, uh, July fourteen through eighteen with, uh, First Sergeant Miley. This program is what keeps us consistently in the top twenty in the nation across all NJROTC teams. Like the support we received in attending our two national competitions, if this is an event, we could use some financial funding. It would be greatly appreciated. Uh, First Sergeant Miley and family will be chaperoning our students while they receive instruction from collegiate and Olympic shooters. Uh, Summer Leadership, uh, Summer Leadership Training at Count Bud Shields. That's July twenty-one through twenty-six with First Sergeant Miley. This program is, program is held annually at Count Bud Shields in collaboration with the Boy Scouts of America. This covers six days at camp, three square meals, full access to the count's facilities. This year, it will grow. Listen to this. McDowell is the lead unit that hosts over two hundred and fifty cadets from multiple states and over fifteen schools in the region. We highly encourage board members to come out and see our students rappel from a tower, shoot skeet, and small bore rifles and lead their peers through more. If any members would be interested in sponsoring, uh, attendance, attendance fees, uh, or if the board would like to provide support, it would be greatly appreciated. Fee per student is two hundred and eighty-five dollars this year. McDowell plans to send thirty-eight cadets this year. Did, did we help on any of that or had, was that talked about?
Yes, sir. Most of that was done through fundraising, but they did want to just advertise that if anybody wanted to make any donations, that they would certainly accept those.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. McGinnis, do you have anything to add to?
I'm just thinking of what he said. We've got a great unit, and they're active, and they pack their calendar. There's something going on every single year, and that's probably one of the best-run programs that I've seen. Definitely one of the best in the nation, and we have it right here in McDowell. And the overlap up there to high school with the other programs, it's just phenomenal what they're doing. And, you know, I just, I'm glad to be, some way to advocate them in any way, any way I can. I want to be a part of that. So, but yeah, I think he's covered everything they got coming up. So, I'm sure there'll be more by next meeting. So...
I've always said this, and Mr. Baker reiterated the other day about all the things that they offer at high schools, especially through CTE. It's just, I've coined this phrase, but it's a great time to be a student in McDowell County. There's so many opportunities here. You know, we don't have just one high school. We've got, what, four total?
Two early colleges and some, it's an option in the traditional high schools. Four total options.
Yeah. And hey, they all offer something for everybody. So, we're, we're nothing to be slack or looked down upon whatsoever. And next item on the agenda, item number thirteen, is approval of consent agenda. And I want to remind everybody that if there's any one item on the agenda that you'd like to pull and talk about it separately, we can vote on that separately. But if there isn't, I'll entertain a motion to the, to approve the consent agenda as it's printed on the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shuford to approve the consent agenda as printed. We have a second by Mr. McGinnis. And is there any further discussion? Okay. With no further discussion on the approval of consent agenda, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And at this time, requesting a motion to go into closed session, and it will be requested under subsection A1 to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential student information pursuant to twenty United States Code twelve thirty-two G, FERPA, and General Statute one fifteen C, four oh two E, includes student discipline and student transfers and releases. And under subsection A1 to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C, three nineteen dash three twenty-one, includes employee matters. And under subsection A, A5, to discuss the acquisition of real property. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Ms. Helms to go into closed session. Is there any further discussion on going into closed session? At this time, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous at seven fifty P.M.